It is 6:30.
Well, I suggest that we proceed with tonight's meeting. And this is a regular meeting of the Planning and zoning Board for Village of Pittsburgh. People are welcome to attend in person. And also, there's a Zoom-in possibility. And you can refer to the Village website for instructions how to join us that way. If you do have any questions, and you're not present, then you would refer to... How would someone ask us a question?
Do you want to open the meeting before giving the instructions?
You can give instructions now if you're on a roll. Go ahead. Oh, you haven't opened the meeting yet?
No.
Okay. Sorry. That's what I said, isn't it?
I have a different question. Yeah.
All right. Our move back up. I move that we open tonight's meeting, regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Board.
All right. So, good.
Member Wilks?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Member Reynolds?
Aye.
Motion passes. To answer your question, if anyone has... Would like a follow-up from this meeting that wasn't able to attend, they can reach out to the Village office.
What's part of the question also? How people can participate remotely?
Right.
Oh, they can raise their hand. And they could be called on if you're taking public comment. As well as put a question in the Q and A for the clerk to read.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. So, we have two agenda items this evening. An application in regard to 42 Monroe and an application in regard to 75 Monroe. We're doing it by street, apparently. So, the first question is, does any board member have a conflict? Or is there something that should be disclosed in regard to either one of these applications?
I will recuse on 75 Monroe.
Thank you.
I do not on either one.
I do not. Okay. All right. And first up is 42 Monroe. And if the applicant would like to approach and kind of just introduce your application before us tonight, that would be great.
The chairs.
Great.
I'm Robert Fizanelli. I'm the resident at 42 Monroe. This is Kyle. He's been working with us with New Energy Works on an updated design. So, we had been in here July 6th of 2022. That is site plan approval that has since expired. And we're here to hopefully get it approved again. Talk about the few little changes that we made since the last one.
That's what we'd like to hear, right? If you could walk us through that.
Yeah, so I can just give you the overview. And then Kyle can give you any details you need. Basically, we just went from a two-story addition to a one-story addition.
So, the footprint remains?
Footprint was the same.
Exactly the same.
Square footage, obviously, cut down significantly.
Cut down from the second floor. So, obviously, there were some minor deviations in terms of plan dimensions. But really, just it had to do with some existing additions that were verified through between last time. As we mentioned, two stories, not a single story addition. So, that changed the elevation of the lines. But in general, they're sticking with the same character and same... Actually, they're similar to what was previous to this one, as well as putting a character to the house. That's really the bulk of it. We did add powder room in the basement with access from outside. I think that the... So, in the original, we had the access. But I don't know if the powder room doesn't mention that. But pretty soon.
Right. So, you know, we're always interested in any changes that will affect drainage or anyone. But this is all to the back of your property. And I don't know, going from two stories to one story isn't going to affect your drainage system, I would expect at all.
The lakes are all facing back, so the lights facing Monroe Avenue.
Yeah.
The doors and windows will all be wood. And that should be the current architecture of our house.
And the last thing will...
Will be improved.
Seemed like last time that was a question mark.
Anyone else on the board have any questions or comments?
There's nothing online.
Okay, we could close the public meeting.
I believe the opening of the...
Or open the public meeting. So, I move that we open the meeting to the public.
Second.
Thank you. Member Shannon?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Wilks?
Aye.
Member Reynolds?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Excellent.
That was just a point.
It's your last time you voted, all right? That was to open the meeting.
That was the only thing. Right. And if there are no questions?
I don't see anyone online. And my apologies, I'll wait until you guys are ready for your discussion. Well, any comments online? If there's any one that you want to add.
Okay, so I will take two on closing the public meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Member Wilks?
Aye.
Member Reynolds?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Let me just make a clarification. Member Loda opened and closed the public hearing.
Oh, sorry.
So, I didn't give you a worksheet for this application? Did I give you the one from last time? Was it good? Okay, that's where I was going with this. So, if you wanted to go through it, and I could just fill in for you? Or is there anything you want to change on that one?
I think we've kind of come to the conclusion that there's nothing for us to change.
Okay.
I would agree with that. The footprint is the same.
Same, right.
And I think we could vote on it without going through the...
Right.
Yeah. Again, lighting's going to be backwards-facing. Drainage doesn't seem to be an issue. If anything, it's less building, you know?
That was the joint next year. It was second story, the single story. Other than that, on the exterior, it's likely the same structure.
Right. Well, that being said, I move that we approve the application for 42 Monroe.
Second.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Wilks?
Aye.
Member Reynolds?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Now it's time to go.
Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Now, where are the usual chairs?
You guys are confusing me with the seat, though. I'm to you.
Mike's doing a great job.
Well, we're going to lose Mike, though. So, we find Monroe.
Without taking out their votes, there's some voter, other people voter.
Yep. Welcome back. Thank you.
It's nice to see you all. David, I'm Chris Nadler.
I was going to say, great to meet you.
Nice to meet you. We missed most of the fun.
Here now, so.
So, yeah, now onwards to item 275 Monroe. And what is before us tonight is a request for an extension of the site plan approval. And your request to extend that site plan approval one year effective with the termination of the litigation.
That's correct. If you will... I'm Chris Nadler, General Counsel for Mark IV Enterprises and Pittsburgh Canalite Properties, the owner of 75 Monroe Avenue. Most of you will recall, I believe, in August of 2022, this planning board granted final site plan approval with conditions for the project at 75 Monroe. All the site plan related... Excuse me. And then in January of 2023, the planning board adopted a formal resolution with conditions, some of them related to engineering comments and DPW concerns. And one stating that a building permit must be issued one year from that date. All the site plan related and technical conditions were addressed. And acting chair Loda, the town or village engineer, the building inspector, and commissioner of the DPW all signed the final site plans. It was an intent to actually commence site development a number of weeks after that. As a result of financing concerns, we weren't able to. But we had submitted a building permit application in March of 2023. Village consultants signed off on that in September 20... September 2023. But based on a dispute over the amount of fees the village was charging, we were unable to obtain the building permit, commence litigation, based on conversations with the village's attorneys and the village board. We're proposing a settlement agreement to cut to where by the PCP will pay a substantial amount for a building permit. And the village will issue a building permit. One of the things that needs to happen there is to essentially retroactively allow us to obtain a building permit with a renewed, reinvigorated, if you will, site plan approval. There have been no changes to the site plans that this board approved. There have been no changes in conditions at the site. So, as my letter stated, we're asking the planning board authorize the paragraph in the settlement agreement. It says the agreement has been presented to the planning board for the purpose of extending the final site plan approval for one year effective with the termination of the litigation. And the planning board has approved the execution of this agreement solely as to this cause.
Thank you. Just for the record, I believe it was David Marshall who signed the final site plan approval.
He had just gotten elected as village trustee. I have a picture of you, Susan. Because I didn't believe it was happening there. I got a picture of you. Yeah, I did. No, it's definitely you.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, we had a special meeting, and you were appointed acting chair for signing the MyLars.
It's like one of my first meetings.
I have walked it out, so anyway. So, I think we should open the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Member Wilks?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Motion passes.
So, is anybody weighing in in the public?
Not online. There's none.
Okay.
And there's nobody in the room.
And there is no one in the room. Right. One, two, three, four, five. I move that we close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Wilks?
Aye.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. So, I will move that the request be extended for final site plan approval, one year effective with the termination of the litigation. The planning board grants the one-year extension because there are no substantial changes in circumstances that would require us to deny such a request. And we... The request that the planning board approve the execution of the final settlement agreement in the litigation solely as to the one-year extension is granted on the condition that the settlement agreement is executed by the village board of trustees, the historic preservation board, as well as this board. The planning board authorizes the acting chair, that is me, to execute the settlement agreement pursuant to that one condition. I will remember that one. Do I have a second to this motion?
I'll second.
Member Wilks?
Aye.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Hopefully, now David, interestingly enough, for 10 years, he came in every single year to renew one condition of the site plan approval. So, I think this will be the end, though.
Right. There's some symmetry tonight, I have to say.
I saw the eye rolls. Thank you all very much. Mindy, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think this is... Hopefully, the village will get the contribution they need and will be able to move forward. Appreciate it. Thank you. Have a great day.
Have a good night.
You too.
What document is that motion part of? Just the minutes or is there a resolution?
It's a resolution.
It's a resolution.
I'll hand it to you.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll put it on a draft. Yeah. Drafted, I'll hand it to you.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Can you forget that?
Yeah. Welcome back. Welcome back.
Okay. Moving along. Those are... That's the new business the Planning and Zoning Board had to address tonight. Why don't we... Should we go to the member item before we do the minutes? Why not?
With the acting chair?
Yeah.
Totally fine. Sounds totally fine with me.
Yeah, let's do that. And then we can wrap it up with the minutes.
Okay. So, I have a member item for 5 State Street. And before I go into that, does anyone have a conflict of interest for 5 State?
You do not?
No.
I do not.
I do not. Okay. So, as this board may recall, on April 5th, 2023, the ZBA passed Resolution 2023-6, Resolution 2023-7, and 2023-8, which granted three area variances with respect to 5 State Street. Resolution 2023-6 granted an area variance for 95% lot coverage, whereas Village Code Section 210-21.6 requires lot coverage not to exceed 60%. And Resolution 2023-8 granted an area variance permitting zero parking spaces, whereas Village Code Section 210-25.2 requires a property to have 26 parking spaces. And so, with that, I move to make a motion for the ZBA to pass a resolution to hold a rehearing to review the lot coverage variance and parking variance. Do I have a second?
A second then.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Member Wilks?
Aye.
Member Reynolds?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Great. Well, I think we're setting a landscape record tonight. Business accomplished. So, let's move on to... We have two minutes, two groups of minutes to approve tonight from April 24th. That was a special meeting and June 5th. That was regular meeting minutes.
Do you have a second? Then I can just move on.
No. They were... Sorry. They were in the packet, the email packet.
Oh, okay. I looked on the website. Sorry.
It's okay.
So, the... I do have a... I can't... I honestly don't remember which minute it was. But the acting chair wasn't Justin. I think it was Jared. You were referred to in the minutes as the sub-chair.
Oh, interesting. Okay.
Which I didn't... You know, I knew what was... What you meant. But I mean, usually, it's referred to, I think, as an acting chair.
Acting.
Right. Right. So, I would request that, you know, just to be consistent with common usage. And certainly, how we have referred to acting chairs here, that that be changed.
Okay.
And that was the only thing that I had. The special meeting, have we made a decision if we are going to do minutes first? Oh, no, that was your question. I'm sorry. Nope, nothing. Okay. Take it back.
Keeping me on my toes, Susan.
Just see if people are paying attention.
Yeah.
In the special meeting notes at the end, the motion to close the meeting, it looks like Mike might not be on there.
Thank you. When you have added something in red, is that for the board members? Or is that for... That will go on the website as part of the minutes?
I have no decision on that. It's just a template that has been used when I started. So, I'm not really sure where the red note was implemented and why.
So, does that refer to... Do you think that refers to going back to the video?
Are you talking about this further detailed information about this specific meeting?
Right.
Yes, exactly.
I would just be clear about that. You know, for specific details refer to the...
It could not just mean... It could be the reporting. It could mean like the full agenda. If there were... It could mean the full packet.
It's almost like a catch-all.
Yeah, just to go back to that meeting date, if there was additional documents outside of this minute. So, if you want the language to change, what are we trying to redirect them to besides just going to the website?
Just to know what they can be redirected to.
Okay.
So, I would list those things. Okay.
Yeah, I would agree. I agree with that. Just be more clear for the public to look at it, say.
Basically, the meeting...
It's almost like the nail on the website, the...
Does it need to be in red?
No.
Okay.
I don't think it needs to be. Obviously, it's a problem if it is, though. Maybe we can spend less on colored ink.
There we go. Good thinking.
I don't know.
The addresses, are they okay listed in red? Or is that just a specific note at the end? Those are the only two things that I ever noticed on the minute since ones that are in red.
I kind of like that. I believe it helps to quickly identify, you know, what we're working with.
Yeah.
But kind of the note to the public of, here's where you can go. This does not contain all the information. You can go to the website for additional information.
Okay. Or full.
For both. Yeah.
So, I'm sorry. I have a question about the June 5th. Wasn't that a regular meeting, not a workshop?
Yes, it was. It was.
Was it a workshop? Or was it a regular meeting?
No, it was a regular meeting.
Okay, so the minutes should reflect that it was a meeting and not a workshop. And it should also identify who was present.
I do have my copy. Please see. That was one of the ones I was referring to, the sub-chair.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Was someone copy, I see, but that's okay.
I think there's two pages.
I don't think I was there.
Yeah, that was Ryan.
That was a little short.
Yeah, so Jared would have been the acting chair.
Right.
I understand.
Okay.
Which is funny, because another board does use that.
Oh, yeah.
I'm just going to keep going. Right. And then Member Cook's motion would be to open the public meeting, not the workshop.
Yes.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Any other comments on the minutes? So, I make a motion that we approve both the minutes from April 24th and June 5th, as we have just amended them.
I'll second.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Member Cook, was that you or...
Yes.
Thank you. Member Wilks?
Aye.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Which are we approving first? The 24th? Because I know some members weren't here, so they should have stayed. Because I've never done it to get the motion together. So, if we're taking a vote for the 24th first?
So, which one would have us?
So, Member Wilks wasn't at the 24th.
Okay. So, let's do... So, I'll make a separate motion to approve the minutes from the 24th.
Okay.
Yeah.
Second. Member Cook?
Aye.
Member Wilks?
Aye.
Abstain.
Thank you.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
And Member Reynolds?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Any additional member items from the meeting?
If we can do a motion for the 5th?
Oh, I thought... Okay.
It's for them.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I make a motion that we approve the minutes as a member from June 5th this year.
I'll second.
And Member Cook?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Member Wilks?
I abstain.
Thank you. Member Loda?
Aye.
And Member Reynolds?
Aye.
Abstain.
Or should I... Okay.
Thank you.
It's been a long day.
It really has.
Okay.